Howard.
My guest, Jamie Howard.
Hi, can you guys hear?
Been doing this for a long time.
I know.
I haven't seen him in a while. This is my brother.
Yeah, been for a while. Can you guys hear?
Yeah, it looks good.
Great.
Thanks, Eric. Thank you too much.
For several years.
Got the idea.
Yeah. We've tracked down everything we're counting out. We were never up there. Now I.
That led on to most people. That is the extent of my technical.
Exhausted here. Your skill set. Something I don't do too.
Yeah.
So my, my question, Brian, you know, there's some discussion about the easement, the fisherman's easement and stuff. Can you point this out on a map so we're all, everybody, including myself, we're all on the same page with our orientation?
Right there. Page numbers on these packets would be. Yeah, super. I realized that after I cleared altogether. Uh, so twenty foot fisherman's easement is identified on the flat. And here I'm borrowing the applicant's presentation, which provides color coded as a nice.
Oh, there it is.
It is the old one. Here's the new one. Yeah. Uh, twenty foot fisherman's easement and there they one hundred foot car in setback.
Okay. Yes.
So just a little pathway towards the last. It's the, uh, the fisherman's easement is a access even block through there.
Hey, guys, uh, well, we will open up the public comment, but once we're done, um, asking clarify questions.
You can help with the description on it.
Does anybody else have, uh, questions for Brian?
Yeah, um, as far as undue hardship is financial hardship part of the consideration or is it only the site characteristics? I guess because with financial hardship isn't the applicant essentially creating that for themselves by trying to obtain this. As a venture.
The actual hardship is a hardship for sure. You're good to do.
And the fact that they're applying for this is that we could ask whether that creates hardship.
Yeah.
Part of that. Manage the canal without already putting right now, which can help with the description and answers that question.
So I'd recommend wait until.
Do not hear any of it.
Who waits a public commentary over the view?
Well, I, okay, I can answer the question, but okay.
I think you can.
So where did we land on that discussion as far as if it could be a, could be considered a hardship financial?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
I, I, I read the Idaho Power thing. It seems like it's pretty expensive to, uh, move power lines during.
Yeah.
Like fourteen million per mile.
Yeah, fifteen million a mile in a case.
But are they not creating that for themselves by trying to obtain this?
Well, I guess that would be true for any application then. I think it's. I mean, they do something else to create the situation that they, you know, our lives weren't better than by them. So I can keep saying no to that.
Then we can revisit that. We need to, uh, any other questions? And then maybe at this point we should have the applicant. Uh, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Samantha Stolmacher with Opal Engineering here on behalf of Judy and Keith Myers. They're the owner, owner of the property. And I appreciate your time to review this, this application. So I wasn't part of the original applicant team that presented this to the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council, um, in two thousand and twenty-three. But we're here today, um, in, in an effort to create a, a clear lot line adjustment, um, and to discuss the road improvements in more detail. So we're happy to answer the questions and present what, what we feel is appropriate, um, from a, from a road improvement standard, uh, that, uh, road improvements that are, that's appropriate for this location. Um, if we can go to the next slide here, we'll kind of give you just a broad description map of where this is located. So as, as staff mentioned, this is located between Walnut and Chestnut, west of Highway seventy-five. So this is a stretch of six existing townsite lots, um, that extend from the alley west towards the river. Um, and there's a, a portion of the bench that's, um, a portion of the property that's up on top of the bench, and then it slips down to the canal to the river. Um, so the, the lot lines that are proposed currently are taking those, um, second streets into consideration. Um, and I think that, you know, one key with this application that will come into play with the, um, you know, is the waiver out of scale with the proposal or the, the potential development. I think that, that the key there is that there are six existing townsite lots in this block. Um, we're reducing the number of those lots to three. Um, technically those six townside lots are saleable today. They hold value. Um, but we feel that the proposed layout is better for the community as a whole. It creates potential for connectivity with Howard Preserve if we can coordinate with the, the land trust in the future. Um, and, and we feel that the remaining two lots up on the bench, while they hold value, they don't hold an exorbitant amount of value, you know? Um, and I think that when we talk specifically about the road improvements and the challenges that exist in that alley, um, it was improved as an alley with utilities and transmission lines. There's encroachments such as sheds. Um, it, it's, it's expensive to develop the road standard as is, uh, typical with the city's standard section. Um, it was intended to be an alley, but this is unique in that there's existing, existed plating right, platted right away on the north side and south side and Walnut and Chestnut. That's inaccessible to those lots. So we understand that there have to be improvements to the road. We just want to meet in the middle so that the improvements are consistent with kind of the feel of Bellevue. And we're working with the existing, um, constraints. So if we can go to the next slide, please, uh, just for some context, uh, what was previously approved, uh, before I became a part of this team was a four lot subdivision. So we had, um, three lots access from the alley with the middle lot really not fronting Walnut or Chestnut as well. Um, and then lot one A, which is that long, narrow, blue lot, which is, um, on the, the west side of the property. And that's entirely down off of the bench. Um, we can go to the next slide. So what we're here today to present to you is a three lot subdivision. So we have two lots, um, one in the northeast, one in the southeast, and then the same lot one A on the west side of the property. And the goal with this lot configuration really was to try and negotiate and have conversations with the land trust in the future so that there's good connectivity between the Howard's Preserve, um, to the north and the south. In the interim, we are proposing, uh, the dedication of the twenty foot fishermen's access easement, which was part of the, um, approved plot that was approved in two thousand and twenty-three. Let's see if we can go, we can kind of all skip through the first couple of conditions, uh, that we had requested modification of based on the original approval. Um, condition one, as, as staff mentioned, is the, um, the setback requirements from the canal easement. Um, and we've provided the letter from the District forty-five Irrigation Canal Company. Uh, so we feel that, uh, and it sounds like staff is in agreement that, uh, helping providing setbacks inconsistent with what the D forty-five is requesting is appropriate there. I'm sorry, I've spent too much time, but we can certainly answer any questions you have on that, uh, requested modified condition. If you can scroll down, this kind of provides a graphic as well. Um, so previously the, um, the restriction for building on lots, uh, those three lots facing the alley was, uh, loaded to the, the top of the bench. And in coordinating with D forty-five, they're comfortable with us allowing for future developments so long as everything is engineered up to that highlighted line, which is fourteen feet from the high water mark. That allows them sufficient access to the canal for maintenance. So if we can go to the next slide, um, condition three is relative to building envelopes and setbacks on corner lots. Um, while we feel that, um, this application of the seventy-five foot setback from the corner of each of these lots is still feels a little, um, odd because those, uh, street right of ways aren't improved. Um, and the intent of that setback is to improve, you know, allow for site distance and sightlines. Um, and we understand that the alley is the primary access for, um, for these lots. So if, if it's necessary to, um, restrict buildings within a seventy-five foot radius of that corner, I think we can live with that. But again, we would prefer to, um, to not imply or not apply that, uh, additional corner law restriction because the streets are not developed west of, um, this, this tally. We can move on to condition number four. So this is really kind of the meat and the potatoes of our request here today. The other conditions are relatively simple, but, um, I think that the, these waivers are extremely important to the applicant because they create a significant amount of cost, um, if they're not approved. And I'm going to go through specifically, you know, what's so challenging about the standard section? And then why we have proposed what we proposed and talk about some alternatives as well. So if we can get to the next slide, please. Um, so the standard road improvement section includes, it, it's a pretty large section intended for a fifty foot right of way in the city of Bellevue. Twenty-two feet of asphalt with two feet of gravel shoulders on either side. Um, and, and then room as well for drainage improvements, um, swales and catch basins and dry wells. And what we've shown in the graphic on the screen in front of you, and this is part of an exhibit that I submitted to staff, um, I apologize, but just last week. So in this section on the bottom half of this screen, you'll see the trans, um, it's actually a transmission line that runs along the east side of the existing gravel improvements in the alley. Um, and that transmission line has rather large posts, eighteen to twenty inch posts. Um, and their location in the alley section, if a, a street were to be developed to the city of Bellevue standard is within a couple inches of the edge of asphalt. So it's actually those pole poles would be within the gravel shoulder of the street section. Um, we did reach out to Idaho Power to get some feedback from them on how, um, what their comfort level was with that kind of proximity to the street. And it, you'll see it in your packet, but the, you can go to the next slide. I'm sorry, I jumped right to, if you can get that one more, one more page there. So, um, the, the, the box in red there, I highlighted, um, feedback from Idaho Power. So where there are no curves present, so there's no physical barrier keeping a car, um, in that travel lane. The supporting structures, which would be the, uh, the poles in this location, um, uh, should be located a sufficient distance from the roadway to avoid contact by ordinary vehicles, um, using and located on the traveled way. So in my opinion, a couple inches, um, between edge of asphalt and these transmission lines is not a safe condition. And we don't, I do not think that it's sufficient, um, for safe use of vehicular travel. If this were to be constructed, I think that people would end up driving in the middle of the street, which would result in unsafe operating conditions. So I don't feel that you can build the standard street section with those holes in place. So then can we move them? Well, we, we asked Idaho Power about that too. So these are distribution lines. If they were distribution lines, they would be simpler and less costly to relocate it, to relocate. These are transmission lines and they run north, south, all the way from, you know, all the way through town, all the way through Haley. They've been there a long time. We certainly didn't install them. Um, and the cost to underground those transmission lines for just one block is about two to two and a half million dollars. So the question comes into play of whether or not the value of that undergrounding work, um, is, is an undue burden. And given that the two lots that we would be creating here in the alley benefiting from the improvement of that street, street, um, I mean, I, I don't think that the value of those two lots, um, exceeds two and a half million. I know it doesn't. Um, so I do feel like the, the, the request or the requirement to underground those transmission lines is an undue burden to the applicant. So we can't relocate the power to underground or shift it. Can we ship the road? And that's what we've proposed to them. We feel like, um, shifting the road so that it's off centered in the right of way is a good alternative. It still allows for space to develop drainage improvements in the right of way. Um, and we can leave those transmission lines in place so that there's safe distance from the edge of the road. If we can go up one slide, uh, there's also another infringement that, uh, we have concern about. So there's an existing shed on the north, uh, the north edge of this alley. Um, and it's entirely within the alley right of way. It actually extends almost fourteen feet into the standard road section if that road section were to be developed, were to be developed. Um, staff and I have dialogued a little bit about whether that shed can be removed. Um, anecdotally from my client, that shed has been existing for fifty to sixty years. So we have a question about whether or not it can be removed. I think staff has responded in that it, it, the, the city can remove it. Um, it's, it located entirely within the right of way. Um, but I think that we would ask that if, that the city wants us to construct the section, uh, or the, the street kind of closer to the center of the alley right of way there, um, that we would need some assistance with that, um, that shed relocation removal. Just from, because we feel uncomfortable removing something that's been there for, for so long.
Have you talked, have you talked to the owner?
We have not.
Yeah.
No. Um, but I mean, because it's been existing for so long and there is access around it currently, we have proposed in the waiver, um, that exhibit to, sorry. We've proposed to basically shift the alley section further, uh, west so that we can actually get vehicles around that shed. Um, so that's an option to consider. If we can scroll down, um, to the, there we go. So the proposed road improvements that we've, we've presented, so this is consistent with exhibit E two, EX two in the original, so middle. And what we propose is to shift for a majority of the alley, we'd like to shift the road center, um, about five feet west of the center of the right of way um, to create additional space between those transmission lines. Um, that would allow for seven to eight feet from the edge of gravel to the pole. And, uh, we feel that that would be sufficient space for safe travel. It wouldn't make people feel uncomfortable so much so that they're driving in the, the center of the road because of that obstruction on the side of the road. Um, we've proposed a twenty foot gravel width, um, which we did so because we're left with a small amount of space. Um, we wanted to create a swale on the west side of the, the alley. And to do so and really have a be effective narrowing that up to twenty feet, we felt was, um, was appropriate. Um, and then the, the last waiver from the standard is that instead of an asphalt alley, we're requesting that that gravel road surface remain a gravel road surface. Um, neither Chestnut or Walnut are, are asphalt streets. Um, and we feel that while this is acting as a street to serve these two lots, it is only serving two lots and it's within a, a planted alley. Um, there are no other paved alleys that I'm aware of in the city of Bellevue. So we felt that a gravel road section here was appropriate. Um, and I believe that there's a letter from the fire department. I also talked to him last week. That he was comfortable with the, the twenty foot gravel road section. Um, I know that the city engineer did provide comments as well about the width of the road, uh, because it's the primary access. The fire department was comfortable with twenty feet. I think that if we needed to increase the width of that gravel slightly, we could, um, and still maintain separation from the transmission line and create a, a functional swale. But I don't know, I, I think that it would be, you know, if we had twenty-two feet of gravel or potentially twenty-four, um, we could, we can make that work as well. Um, but this is the proposed section that we would like to develop. And again, the, the shed on the north side of the, the alley is shown in that aerial. So you can see the, the proposal is to create a little S curve to get around that shed. Um, if the city's willing to remove that, we can develop a, a, a section, a gravel road section that goes straight, again, five feet off center of the center of the right of way. But the, I, I, I talked through that relatively quickly, so I'm happy to answer any questions. But again, the, the burden is certainly on the applicant to, to provide justification that these special considerations, um, special physical characteristics, uh, or conditions affecting the property are creating undue burden. Um, and again, I think that the, the major undue burden here is the transmission lines. We, we cannot underground them. It will absolutely kill the project. Um, you know, if we were creating twenty subdivision lots out of this block, then maybe there would be a financial incentive for, you know, a property owner to relocate or underground those transmission lines. But in this scenario, we're going from six townsite lots to three lots. One of them, hopefully we can negotiate with the land trust to create more connectivity with Howard's Preserve. So it, we're not creating a significant number of, um, lots of this, this lot line adjustment. This isn't a, a large subdivision. So we feel that the waivers that we've asked for are appropriate for the scale of the project and, um, and for the, the location of the property within the city of Bellevue as well. So hopefully that answered some of your questions. I'm happy to stand for questions if you have any and we'll, uh, look forward to public comment as well.
One question I have though, with your proposed road improvement, the, the west side of the road, how far is that from the, the drop off onto the?
Yeah.
You know, I was talking about the hill that goes down to Howard Preserve.
So.
Proposed.
So the edge of the, the gravel that's there, that's, that's shown in that section is, I think it's almost ten feet from the property line. And then from the property line to the top of the bank is, it, it varies in width as, you know, roughly thirty to forty feet from the edge of the property line to the top of the bank.
Okay.
Fifty, fifty, yeah.
Yeah.
I have a question. Um, is there any information at this time about the types of structures or the types of businesses that would go in this location?
We don't have any, any set plans at this time. Now they're, uh, currently being, uh, leased for construction purposes, construction storage.
Okay, thank you.
And this is within the business district, correct? Interesting.
It's a unique property. Challenging.
So am I correct in thinking that one A would not be a buildable lot in, under, and then no matter what happens with the land trust?
There is a building envelope proposed. Um, there is a, a condition of approval on the flat notes clarifying that until vehicular access is improved to lot one A, it is not buildable. So before anybody could submit for a building permit, they would have to develop a vehicular access to that building envelope.
Oh, the cul-de-sac on Riverside?
Yeah.
And is one A the, the blue one there?
You know, well.
Um, and addressing the land trust, um, comment, um, it has there been a consideration of extending that fisherman's access to the south side of lot one A? So the fisherman's access easement is defined by the ordinary high watermark of the river. So it's, it's basically twenty feet from the bank. And that bank dives, dives west away from the property as you continue south. So now we're, uh, we're proposing to dedicate the fisherman's access easement along the watermark. Yeah, I know that they had, they had suggested extending that further south into the flood plain. The flood plain is still private property. Um, so no, I, you know, I think that Keith has been working with people and the land trust about trying to direct the traffic. So there's, um, there isn't trespassing. He's been really flexible in the past, but, um, no, at this point, the, the fisherman's access easement is what's proposed, um, for public access across the property.
Are there any, uh, discussions of improving that, that pathway? Along the, along the river?
Not that I'm aware of.
How is it defined currently?
The pathway?
Yeah.
I don't know that if there's a defined pathway, um, but, you know, as a fisherman's access easement, somebody would basically just walk along the riverbank.
Yeah. Any other questions? Um, yeah, go ahead and open it up for public comment, um, at this time. So if you'd like to make a comment, raise your hand, state your name, um, and address for the record and go from there.
Thank you, John. Um, hi, everyone. My name is C.C. Osborne. I work for the Land Trust. Um, could be here, but considering our comments, um, just to pick up on that last question, um, how is the path defined right now? Right now, we would say public access to the southern end of Howard Preserve is secured through, and maybe Brian, you could pull up satellite imagery or even the Riverside Estates plat. Um, so it's, it's, uh, allowed by public access on Riverside Drive and then an unnamed right of way, um, provided by the River State, uh, State, uh, subdivision plot, um, which intersects the West Chestnut right of way, which is also eighty feet wide. And that's at the southern corner of the proposed lot one A. Um, from there, people can walk, um, below the ordinary high watermark legally and access Howard Preserve. Wonder who want to want to get on the map at all a little bit? Can people see what we're talking about? Um, so yeah, right underneath the magnifying glass is that intersection there of the right of way with West Chestnut and an unnamed road. And then the Myers property and the proposed lot one A is just northeast of that. And so there is also a provision in code. I wrote it out in my letter here. Um, so it says the proposed plat partially addresses one of the standards by delineating a twenty foot fisherman's easement on the northwest edge of lot one A. Um, but beyond that minimum standard, the code calls that minimum standard. Um, the code states that quote unquote, the council shall require an appropriate, inappropriate areas and easement providing access through the subdivision to the bank, dot, dot, dot. And in appropriate cases where subdivision of lots, a portion of the river adjacent to an existing pedestrian easement. Adjacent to an existing pedestrian easement, the council may require an extension of that easement. Along the portion of the river, riverbank. So meaning that. Connectivity is encouraged. So we would ask the commission to consider. Connecting that proposed fisherman access easement in lot one A. To the West Chestnut right of way, which would sanction that public access through Howard Preserve. I'm trying to think if there's anything else. I know other people are here to talk about the public access and.
You can you point that out, Lucy, just on the.
Sure, so. This is the cul-de-sac. Here. And there is. An extended plowed area right now, if you've been down there recently, that is an eighty foot right of way. Plotted for the.
You're actually north of the cul-de-sac there. Can you move that mount a little bit? You'll see the cul-de-sac below or just south of of that little turnout area.
Oh, thank you. Yes. So this is the unnamed.
Yeah.
Road right there, right away. Thank you. And it's plowed to about that area. And the property line here edges state. There's a pink stake in the ground you can see. And there are also some cement posts that align with the West Chestnut right of way. So this, there is public access. Through here and then per state statute, people can access Howard Preserve below the ordinary high watermark. And we're asking that that fisherman access easement that right now is just planned for right here. Be extended for that connectivity. As you can see and as you can imagine in flooding events. You're. Right in the flood, we're very close to the floodway. And in some cases, you know, floodway does go through that proposed lot one A. So it would be wonderful through this entitlement process. I understand there is, you know, consideration to be made for the waivers and undue hardship, which sounds very reasonable. But there there they also are asking for waivers. And so this might be something and it might also be something that you consider a requirement per code. If you look at that section of code, it encourages the council and it does say that. The fisherman access easement without connection to other rights of way is a minimum standard.
Anyone else?
My name's John Wright. I'm the canal manager for diversion forty five canal. And I just want to take the opportunity to to state a couple of quite well known. Three very well known principles that we that we abide, that that most everyone probably already knows. The existence of the canal is is. By state statute. Is enough to to declare that that is a right of way, a permanent right of way through there. The width of that right of way is determined by the canal owners, the canal maintenance personnel. And then the third thing, and and those are state statutes. The the third thing, which is also a state statute, is any encroachment into that canal right of way has to be. Has to be given written permission from the canal owners. I'm wondering if you can go to Samantha's first. Map, yeah, that that one there. So the canal. Is very wide. It runs along right in the bench itself, very wide there. It takes up. From the looks of the map there, it's taken up three quarters of the surface area. Of the of the pink lot and the green lot. And. And so. Like I said earlier, we the 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 canal has the. Authority to determine how much of the canal bank. It it needs for. For its own maintenance processes or procedures. So I worked with Keith and 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 the the stance that we've taken in the past is always there would. Naturally, no encroachment below the top of the bank. So you can see that that leaves a very narrow strip there on the pink and the green lots. I worked with Keith quite extensively to try to expand that. To give them a little bit more of a surface area, we determined more precisely what kind of a width we needed to. To maintain our own right of way along. I think the easiest way to describe it is. About halfway. About halfway down the bank. The one thing that, the one thing that I that I not seen here in these descriptions is that there is no relief. Photo that shows. The slope that's coming off of the top of the bank down into the canal. And then across the bottom of the canal and then up over the bank on the other side of the canal. The relief is very significant. It's very steep bank. It's a high bank. I think that the. The that level surface there on the east side is roughly thirty feet from the edge of the water. However, it's probably. Also thirty feet that 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 slope that. Flat surface is roughly probably thirty feet above the water. Level. So it's a very significant relief where it's it's so. So in any event, we get, we presented. And I believe it's it has come to the staff. A description of what we're willing to give up and then. How exactly what must happen in order for us to agree to giving that up? I'm happy to answer questions.
And Keith is who? Okay, okay, great, good. Thank you. Okay. Any other way, somebody raise their hand?
I am Dorothy Chanel. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Dorothy.
Oh, okay. Hi, I'm Dorothy Chanel, twelve seventeen Glen Aspen Drive, Bellevue. I live. In the subdivision south of Riverside. So I'm south of the cul-de-sac. South of Myers property, south of the Howard Preserve. The twenty foot easement on Keith's property currently. From the cul-de-sac. Halfway to the Howard Preserve fence. The the first half is not underwater, but the rest of it has been and will continue to be underwater. So. The legal public access is not accessible. And we, a number of us, would like. Somehow to have the public access moved further. To the east of where it currently is, possibly on the bottom end of the road on the. On the west side of that road. To get the easement legally. Out of the river and onto the property. People have been walking. As Keith knows, we all know, we use the bottom part of Keith's property to access from the south. To the Howard Preserve. I know there's talk that the land trust. May purchase the lot in blue, one A. But until that happens, I know that Keith would prefer us not illegally walking on his property. And I think it would behoove everyone to make a condition on a plat map. So that lot one A has a fixed legal. Twenty foot easement that is not underwater and is at least on the road. I know in low water last year, I tried to walk through the water to get to the Howard Preserve that way. And it's dangerous. It's it's not an easy thing to do and it's deep right. At the beginning of the underwater part. Now, people do walk, like I said, from the cul-de-sac. As far as they can along the quote legal part, but then you have to take a right to get up onto Keith's property. To then walk to the preserve because you can't walk underwater and. I I think it would be helpful until or if. Either the land trust buys that piece of property or if that piece of property is ever developed. I think it would be really good to have a plat note that shows a new designated legal access. For ingress and egress into the Howard Preserve from the cul-de-sac. So that we don't have to risk people's lives trying to be legal. Through the water. It's not possible. It's a dangerous easement. And I know the city of Bellevue has other easements. On the north and south end of the Riverside Estates. I have an easement in my subdivision right near my house on my south side. Going down to the river and then we can walk to the south. On an easement along the river. So I think it would really clarify and make everybody more comfortable. If we could somehow improve what we've got. For the safety of everyone who uses that. And in the summer, there's so many kids in that little section. Where it goes from the cul-de-sac. To where you can walk, okay, and then it's underwater. There's a little beach there. And that's a really scary spot because there's willows there that can just. Take the water and you under those willows. So that that's all I have to say. About that. Thank you.
Thanks, Dorothy.
Thank you.
Wow, go ahead, Tom.
Tom Blanchard, thirty three Lower Broadford Road. And I want to. Expand again on the fisherman's easement, but it's more than that. That roadway that we saw in the the Google map. Basically, is the emergency access for fire departments for emergency services that's been used for years down there. And they have used that. It's the only vehicular access that actually can approach it that the city can use. So if you have a fire down there, your choice then, without some kind of administrative vehicular use. Granted to the city on that roadway. Is come through Martin Wayne and then you have to cross through the canal up onto the canal roadway on the other side and then approach. You know, that property or the Howard Preserve in its southern end through that way. And and with canal money, you can't do it in the summertime. And in the wintertime, it's largely unavailable. So. That is the primary vehicular access that the city has used in the past. And I think Canal Company also uses that. A lot of times to do work down there, you know, under emergency conditions. And I know when they built the. They always use their access up on the canal top, which is, they do have an active legal access there, parallel to the canal. But it's more convenient to use that lower access and that's what everyone's used for years. And I think as a condition. For all, for the waivers, you have four waivers and several unaddressed issues in here. Which I wanted to bring up that I I think should be addressed in this application. One is access. The access I. I've never heard in the city granting the development of or the approval of a developed lot that has no access. I mean, this just doesn't happen as a rule and and I've never seen it happen in the city of Bellevue before. There's no reason why we should not have the information about where that access is going to go. And it's likely to run. Through that road system that is in fact being used right now. And that is where. Doral and the land trust is asking that the fisherman's easement be transferred to. So. I would ask for a condition that in fact we grant an administrative access to the city. Through that existing pathway or roadway. And a non-motorized fisherman easement in that city administrative. That means no civilian use of motorized or any kind of traffic in there. But it does give the city the ability to provide safety down there, fire protection. And actually flood mitigation if it's necessary under certain circumstances. I mean, this is a big area down there and a big. It's a big fire opportunity among other things. So I I think you need to look at public safety. And then combine it with the fishermen's easement coming down that pathway or that roadway.
You're, just to clarify, you're suggesting that you're suggesting that for that existing kind of road bed that's got the. The wire gate across it.
Yeah, the cable.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, Keith, Keith, Keith and I put that cable in about two thousand and six. Because vehicles were driving through there radically and and it was appropriate to mark it off, but you know, keeping to this. Most western portion as much as possible of the Myers property, that road, I think is important to your central safety. Services that the city needs to provide and look out for. That's one of your biggest fire fire dangers down there in my entire city.
Can you point that out again on the? Yeah, I'm pretty sure I'm following, but I want to make sure.
Okay, here's the roundabout and this is the new, this is. A fifty, is this an eighty foot extension that serves these two lots right here? And then you have Robin Lee Hand's property. Right here. And this roadway right now, you'll see it if you walk it. It's a pathway that's down there. But it comes up there and it runs just on this side of the trees. And it provides good vehicular access. Now, the other thing I want to point out is that if you create a trail, the existing. Fisherman's easement comes along here and follows the bank of the river. And then enters into this particular point right here. And I I can tell you from living on the river that if you create a trail there. What you're gonna have is the river's gonna go there. It takes the, you know, the place of least least difficulty. And they run down the trail and it erodes that trail and it eventually will erode the riverbank into that trail. So I I think it's a bad place for a trail. And it's unusable during high water, as Doris pointed out. And I've got pictures of that Lee Hand property, you know. She had, used to have an old couch down there and it's floating in water. And that's, that that isn't floodway area.
You're saying that there was an old road then that that's cabled off?
Yeah. Well, it, well, the road would be a term you would use in your legal definitions. And this is a common use. That the city has used, the canal district has used. The public used it for years. I mean, I've seen kids hot rodding two days, forty years ago. I think moving. Giving administrative access to the city. For emergency and maintenance purposes. And moving the fisherman's easement onto that administrative access, non-motorized. Fishermen's use or pedestrian use.
Okay, I understand your comment now. Thanks for clarifying.
I think those are appropriate relative to the condition. And I support the conditions that they're asking for. I I would like the developer, because I believe she mentioned in her presentation that there was, they were. The cost two point five million was for undergrounding. And I'm not sure if they had explored just movement of poles. And I don't, I don't know. That would be a much lesser figure. Undergrounding is hugely prohibitively expensive. Thank you.
Is that all? Is that all, Tom?
Yeah, I think those are the things I, I, you know, I'm I'm nervous about the definition of hardship and the use of hardship. In granting waivers. And I know in. Practice and in, I think statute hardship was not to be considered. I mean, financial hardship was not to be considered as a hardship in making these decisions, but. That code may have been changed since I was in there playing around. But I I'd ask you to look at that closely before you make a decision.
Thanks. Go back.
Mike Howard, from the Howard family, we're. We're honored to be here. I think I would echo the a lot of the previous comments. With all due respect to the developer. But connectivity is is paramount. Accessibility. To the power preserve was important to us of itself and as well. And keeping that in mind, working together somehow compromising, however that may be. But that's critical for the community.
Wonderful, thanks.
Jim Kim, two one one for Buttercup. Just sort of some of the historic stuff that Tom has mentioned is Keith's been the custodian of that property for over fifty years. He also put in that alley, he developed that alley that was there. And sent his own that property. He's been the only person that's maintained that alley between Chestnut and Walnut. So McGee, he hasn't done that. The city of Bellevue hasn't done that. All the while, the Keith and Judy Myers maintained that. So that there was connectivity to Lewis Street down below and the rest of the. So that there was connectivity to Lewis Street down below and the rest of the alley up above. There are six lots in there currently. We're trying to make it down into, we started with three tactical errors. That, you know, we didn't have access from Walnut and Chestnut getting, or no other access from the side to the middle lot. And we thought better of that and thought that maybe that might be a good idea to have those just two lots, so they're connected on the end. Keith also put in the roadway that allowed the canal access on the west side of the canal. He developed that just for safety and made, for many, many years until he retired, maintained it for the Canal Company. There is been, there has been access into that lower property for over fifty years. Well within the parameters of the script of easement that Keith has used in Riverview. So there is access, has been on there for over, since the development of the Howard Preserve. Which Keith is in favor of. Keith, the applicant, has spent undue thousands of dollars to try to do this, to develop a piece of property. That somehow can get, he doesn't have the bandwidth to donate it. That's part of his retirement, is being part of the community and being part of the construction community in the city of Bellevue for fifty years. He just doesn't have the bandwidth to donate it. But he's spent untold thousands of dollars to try to break that off to allow it to be transferred. Whether the land company buys it, there's a land trust that still has some money in from the taxation that came in. They've got some money, a fundraiser, but fully believes that would love to have the Howard Preserve own all of that. All the way down through. He's been tolerating trespass on his property with a turned eye. And as a member of the community, has been allowing that trespass to continue on. And like I said, that blue strip there designates a main. Where he can get that to the Howard Preserve and Howard Preserve can go all the way down to Riverview. And I just would hope that the city of Bellevue will help the applicant. Make the Howard family's dream come true, extend it down to that subdivision. Make it so nobody has to walk. There's a signed area. I walk it a lot with my dog. And you're absolutely right, I trespass on Keith's property. I know the guy, but the high, there is access to the river. It's all, it's by state statute. Is it safe? No, it isn't safe. There is a way to do that. And Keith is saying, he's spent the money to try to delineate that property and make it safe for the community. So I just hope you take that into consideration of what Keith is trying to do for the community. And I find it, I guess egregious is a little strong. But, you know, putting restrictions on what Keith is trying to do to help the community is. It's very tough to accept that after he's been steward for that property for over fifty years. Thank you.
Anybody else before I ask Tom another opportunity?
I'm Carrie Wesson. I live at five hundred South Main. I'm at the north end, I'm in Pink House at the north end of this property, right across from the alleyway. And about twice a year in the summertime, I go down onto that, it's almost a cliff. But I go down onto that hillside and I pick up trash. And people dump car parts and all, you know, building materials and all kinds of things out behind there. And I appreciate that, you know, he's renting it out, I think, for vehicles and things like that. But every once in a while, stuff gets abandoned there and so, you know, if, if. If he wants to do something that's going to clean the place up, that would be great. And if we can improve that road, that would be great too. We do have residents that use that. It's the only way to get into their houses. They have garages back there and it's their only access, is that back road. So it does, it does affect everyone and if something's built back there, that will make a big difference, so. But if there's improvements, I'm all for it.
Yeah, John, I, diversion forty-five canal, I just wanted to expand a little bit on what Jim was saying as far as Keith's history there. The steward of that strip of land between the canal and the river is practically an understatement for the way that he has maintained that and kept it. In addition to what Jim said, he's also been a steward for the canal. That, that strip of land protects it, it serves as a buffer for the canal. From the river when the river jumps its banks and comes toward, toward the canal. And his work down there has been very instrumental over the years and kept us maintaining it in a very safe manner the way that it is.
Okay, go ahead, Tom.
I just wanted to respond to Jim and second his praise of Keith in terms of what he has done. Down there, he's been a very generous person. He wants to protect that property. I'm not saying these things as something against Keith. I want to see this work and I've seen what they've done to try and make it work. And I think the reason you have one lot down there is we all recognize that that's the way it has to work. If they're going to be able to make what they need to do. But in the meantime, you do have an access issue in terms of public safety. And you do have a very poor Fisherman's easement down there. And I don't like to see Bellevue constantly give away things that they eventually feel bad about. Because they, all of a sudden, they need to be there and they can't get there. And we've done that a lot. We've been very generous. To the community, I think.
Can I say one more thing along those lines? So the water level in the canal is significantly higher than that piece of land. And if anything were to cause any kind of a breach or a seep of water under the bank. Then that stretch of land is extremely vulnerable to any kind of building. And there are, there's notable places up and down the valley where houses have been allowed to be built between the river and a canal. And it's, it's not a wise spot.
Okay, good. Thank you. Okay, one last opportunity for a public comment and then we'll. Anybody online, Brian, do we? Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Matthew, you want to respond to any of us?
Sure. Yeah, thank you. Samantha Stollnecker with Oakwood Engineering for the record. I understand that the public's desire to have public access through that proposed lot one A, that blue lot that we've highlighted. I think my main concern with extending the proposed expansion of the Fisherman's access beyond what we've shown. From, as measured from the ordinary high watermark. Is that without the construction of a, an actual trail. I have significant concerns about people knowing where that easement exists. If it's not relatable to a measurement that's hard from the ordinary high watermark. And I think that that is going to really promote trespassing, further trespassing on that lower lot. So yeah, while what we've proposed is not the entirety of the property as people want. I think that without the construction of a trail in conjunction with some sort of, you know. Future property owners such as the land trust or the city or whoever, we can, we can discuss that with. I don't think that the granting of wider unknown easements that are difficult to see on that property are going to be enforceable. So I have concerns with that, you know, and I think that I want to be clear that what CZ explained is that there's currently under state code. People have access below the ordinary high watermark to access property. That's not safe under high water conditions, certainly, or ordinary high water conditions. But we are proposing to expand that to provide a twenty foot Fisherman's access unit, which is consistent with the city of Bellevue's code. And, and we feel that with that additional twenty feet, it's not ideal, it's not exactly what the public wants. But at this point, it will improve the safety of that, that access along the river. It will give them a landmark to measure from without a trail. And I think that that's the, really the only thing that we can do at this point. Until we can take that next step and work with somebody who, who will create that full connectivity between the north and the south. I think that was the, the main comment, public comment that I wanted to respond to, but if you do have any comments or questions, let me know.
Yeah, you have a question. It looks like on the plat, the main high water was based off of field survey on November seventeenth, twenty twenty-three.
Correct.
And then so the twenty foot Fisherman's access is off of that measurement from that date. And so in November, that's a pretty low flow.
So the, the ordinary high watermark is not the water level. It's a definition that surveyors are trained to pick up or hydrologists are trained in. It is basically where the plant matter doesn't survive. So under normal flow conditions over a year, the course of a year. Those, the water inundation basically doesn't allow for plants to grow below a certain mark. And that's what the ordinary high watermark is. So it's not necessarily where the water was in November, it's the ordinary high watermark.
Okay, so the field date should not affect where that mean high water?
No, I mean, big flood events can change the ordinary high watermark. Like if the river shifts drastically and then the, the main flow is in a different location than the ordinary high watermark would change over time. But not within a season.
So, so if that, not necessarily a corner right there, but if it blows off twenty feet, then do we have an additional twenty feet?
Yeah, I mean, I think that if, if the P and Z felt more comfortable, and I can't remember how the plat is written currently, I can look. But if you felt more comfortable with, you know, not, not actually drawing an ordinary high watermark. And just allowing that to be, you know, a condition, you know, that there is a twenty foot Fisherman's access. Even as measured on the landlord side of the ordinary high watermark, I think that that would be fine.
Because that can vary over time.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. Okay, any, anything else you want to?
Nope.
Yeah, okay. One question I do have though is, it sounds like there is a path that exists already. Man, do you agree with that or disagree with that?
Is there a trail?
And that path wasn't there. And before I put up the cable, saw people, I'd go down there, I was gone one time for, I don't know, a couple of weeks. Came back and went down to check on it. There was a couple of campers in there. And they set up camp pretty well. So how long you been here? I said about ten days. It's a nice place. Yeah, it is. But I bet people come down there, they brought their campers down there, they went down there, they dumped trash down there. That, that was never, that wasn't made road. It's just because people trespassing on it and they caused that. And one, one time I did allow, I allowed trucks to go in there. Because on account, it was during the flood and they were hauling rip trap in. I let them haul down, there were trucks and states sat there and they rip wrapped a lot up to there. And that's, that's the only time that we went down there. We never used it for, we accessed the canal, through the road to Seren up on, on the top. We've used that road there. That road is there now and it's the people walking, do their bike or stuff, you know, for. You know, you put a path there, you walk over thirty, twenty, thirty years, it'll really be a path, but no. Other than people sneaking in there or not sneaking in there, they just got down there and camped. It's a nice place.
That helps me clarify in my mind.
Yeah, no, it wasn't, it wasn't built.
Yeah, yeah, but you could drive a vehicle down it if you need to.
Yes.
Yeah, not that you want to, but you could. Okay, that helps me. Okay. So here we are. What? How do we, how do we feel about where we are and how we want to move forward with this? Brian, it looks like you have something you want to?
Yes, so a couple of points of advice. Base your decision on what's in the record. Now, I'm, this is the first time I admit Mr. Myers tonight and it seems like he's a great guy based on the testimony. We have to treat all applicants equally. And he does not seem to be a sleaze bag, but we're definitely going to deal with some sleaze bags. We have to treat them all the same, so. You know, intent is great, but get in right. So that's one point and then, yeah, this is your opportunity to get any additional information at this point before you vote publicly.
Yeah.
Like that, as for now.
You know, I do, somebody brought up that moving the power pole. Because I think that they can be moved and that is one thing that is worth exploring unless, Matthew, you've got a.
Yeah, I apologize. I forgot to respond to that. So there are existing structures on the east half of that, that block. Thank you for bringing that up. I forgot to mention that. So there are existing structures and I haven't asked Howard directly, but there are pretty restrictive setback requirements from transmission lines. And then there's costs associated with that. To be perfectly honest, I think that if that was a requirement that the city decided to choose, I don't know that Keith would proceed. I think that that would probably make the project not viable and he would sell the lot as is. Which I think would become an issue for public access in the future, but we can look into it. I think that there could be some, some issues with the required setbacks specifically to the, the existing structure on the northeast corner of that. That's lot six of block twenty-four. We could look into it, but I, I don't know that. The setbacks could be met from above ground transmission lines. And then I, I think there would still be issues with costs for this particular applicant.
Yes, we don't know what, yeah, what idle powers setbacks are from poles or moving poles and how far you have to be setback from structures or anything.
Oh yeah, transmission lines are required to be twelve feet, I believe, at a very, very minimum from a structure. But I would have to verify that for this specific stretch of the transmission line.
Would be, I mean, I'm not sure without getting at the measuring tape, you know, what's possible and not possible. I'm sure it would be nice to exhaust that.
Yeah, I do, I would, I would suggest too that if, if we are moving that transmission line closer to those properties that have been not developed at this point. When in the business owning district, they can build up to the zero lot line setback, so it would be impacting their property values as well.
Sure, sure. No, that's. Fair enough. And then with shed, what's the condition of the shed or, I mean, it would be, it's interesting that. Nobody's talked to the, to the owner of the shed to see if that's, if they even want it or use it or what. Okay. Helps me out a little bit. So, you know, I do, I do, you know, you're moving or shifting a road around that, something that.
I think that we have.
The owner of the shed, okay.
It's on city, though, I mean, it's not within my property limits, so. My property limits my fence.
So you don't claim that? Well, yeah, no.
I was waiting for the city to decide what they thought, so.
Yeah, no, we, when we buy property, we inherit what's there. I understand that. So there is. Potential to address that, you know, if I'm. Hearing that. Potential to move it or to. Get rid of it altogether by somebody. Is that a correct assumption? Everybody's looking at me like, am I talking about ghosts?
Yes, if it's on city property, we can remove it.
Okay, okay.
We generally try to be nice about it, but we can remove it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's not, doesn't sound like it's a prized possession of the property owner, so.
Really, really, really old chicken coop.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
I have a question for staff on if condition three, the waiver whether granted for that. Does that change the definition of like what for front and side lot lines? Like how is the alley considered the front lot line at this moment?
Yes, so since there are no setback requirements or anything. Yes, all of those, since there are no setback requirements or anything or. There's really no application of front versus side lot line, um.
Um, I'll just make a comment as well. I'm just speaking of, since we're kind of coming up with a couple of things that might be helpful for additional information to make a decision based on our last meeting, Brian, you'll be proud. I did not go to the site, um, since it wasn't in the meeting packet. Um, but, uh, it seems like this is a place that it might be really helpful to have us all there to see and to talk about things. I don't know about anybody else, but I have not been to this location. I have not accessed these, um, um, these sections around the river and over to Howard's Preserve. So I'm not sure if anyone else is feeling the same about, um, seeing the site for details.
I would appreciate site visit. Put it into context a little bit better.
You know, I would, I, I, I don't visit that area frequently, so I don't, um, and certainly haven't put eyes on it either with regards to this, so it would be quite helpful.
I, I spend a fair bit of time down there, um, with my kids. And it, there are definitely some things that are interesting to see in person down there about kind of how it functions for, for access at the south end, uh, of Howard's Preserve. Um, I would be, I would be all in favor of doing a site visit there.
Yeah.
Is the option open to continue or is there?
Uh, the option is definitely open to continue to a future meeting. Um, as far as doing a site visit, I think we could arrange that. Uh, I think, yeah, it's helpful to have structure and, uh, you will need to figure out the logistics of recording and providing opportunity for public comment and applicant revival and all that sort of thing. Uh, but yeah, it's open to it and Rick is not panicking.
Yeah, I think, and of course then what do we, how much, can we see this at this current snow load or do we need to? But, uh, uh, what, what's our, what do we, what do we need and maybe I'll look to you in terms of like, is there?
You can probably see what Jenny is seeing.
With the, the way that currently sits.
It's not, it's not, I spend a lot of time down there. It's not all that accessible with things you can see with the snow the way it is. I don't know, I don't know.
I'll break you, go down it now.
Yeah, hard markers. There's a state on the southwest corner of Myers Lot, goes all one A. And then it's pretty clear where the cloud, which is all the snow, where the west chestnut right of way is. And then there's also, also the unnamed road, eighty-foot access easement. Um, it's been clouded and then there's a walking path that shows where people are accessing the preserve. Um, and then what's really unclear though is exactly where the high, ordinary high watermark is.
Derek Kurtz, at my point, um, I would have a concern that, uh, based on the bottom of our agenda, uh, individuals need special accommodation for this meeting in accordance with Americans with Disabilities. Yeah, it may be certainly challenging to do.
Could we use, could we do a site visit as an executive session? That's not open.
That, that doesn't follow within the.
No, I, I, I appreciate that you bringing that up, cause it is something we wanna, you know, pick seriously. Go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not hearing everything you're saying, but, um, if you feel like you're limited on time, um, I, I could certainly conduct a tour very easily from the upper side. And because there's no leaves on the trees, we can actually see from the upper side, you can see across to the river. You can see the entire thing from the upper side. And by the upper side, I mean east bank. So we could walk along there, very quick, fairly brief visit and get a good sense of what's there all the way across. But that's just a recommendation. I don't know if you think that's a good idea or not.
Can you do that or you could?
Yeah, I'd be going through the snow and there's only two stakes left down there, I don't know. The north and south boundary stakes are still there. I don't know what happened there.
So if you're feeling short on time, we can do this like soon and we can do it in the snow. If we, it's cloudy, there are traps, so we can look, we can see it all.
Derek Kurtz, same would be, uh, possible to state existing and proposed property lines along with the fishermen's easements. Um, and source stake or spray paint and then I can go out and take a video and document it.
I volunteer to bring the snow shoes.
Well, you know, or if it's, if it's one thing that we can see from the upper bank, from anywhere that a vehicle could get to, then I think we've addressed the, um, uh, the ADA concerns. Um, so we could, but then of course there's the challenge of the public comment, a lot of kind of stuff, but. That's how.
I'd be happy to go and show you where the stakes are and show you. We tried to make a, a path for, we, where she's talking about, where the fisherman's access is. I went and cleaned a lot of it with, uh, me and another guy, chain, with chainsaws up. There's, there's some big, there was, well, log jams and crap in there and it, it's tough to get through. We made it and they've been using it, it's been, they've been improving it, uh, in the last several years and stuff. People go through there and then good on their own stuff, but my thing is the bunch of it out. But I, I don't know whether I bring it out or it's actually supposed to be here or not. It was, it was less than my property mine, but, and.
What's our, what's our sense, what's our sense of urgency with this application?
Yeah, I mean, I think that we, we would like to proceed forward to city council just so Keith and Judy know, um, what they can expect moving into the summer season. Um, I, I mean, I think that if there are specific things about the property you guys have questions about, I'm happy to meet Brian on site. We can take photos or videos and then, and share those. Um, yeah, I, I share Brian's concerns about the logistics of a site visit this time of year. Uh, and we'd like to move the process forward if we can.
Yeah. Um, do you guys think that that would be, you're familiar with it probably most likely, but do you guys think that some videos and some pictures?
Photos and videos would be very helpful. Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
I think that would suffice for me.
Alexis, how about you?
Caught me in a cough attack. No, um, yeah, probably photos and videos. I think of course, like, I'm just wanting to address the, the bulk of the public comment being the accessibility. And I think that for me was, you know, what I wanted to see the most of. So if we feel like a, a video would suffice, then I'm on board.
Okay, no, that's, sounds good to me. Well, we can proceed to, do we wanna try to set a new date or we?
Yes, so I recommend, uh, continuing this to the March third, twenty twenty-five.
Okay. Um, I will say, I, I would only be able to attend virtually. I wouldn't be here in person, um, but that's, um, as long as we can stream that, I can tune into that.
We're here on gap.
Yeah, you're okay.
If I can ask a clarifying question, in addition to the photos of the existing site, is there any additional information or feedback you have to share about the, the waiver request with the road section?
I would be interested to, uh, get a little bit more info. And it seems like there's a connection that could be made here, um, about what the owner of the shed feels about moving it or, or taking it down. Um, you know, if an accommodation could be, could be worked out there where everybody's happy, um. That would be a good thing to know.
And just to confirm, it was on the list. I think we are looking for possibly more information on the, the process of moving the poles. Is that? Possibly have more information on or did we kind of establish that the, um, applicant doesn't think that's feasible?
Yeah, I think we could just exhaust what it, um, how what the setbacks requirements are from Idaho Power from structures and whatever, so we can, and, you know, put those, put that in there and see what, what's possible and what's not possible.
Reading with that information.
Yeah. And then of course an associated cost. I'm assuming, I'm assuming it's just one pole, um, but I don't, you guys will have to figure that out.
Yeah, there are.
One and one.
Three, four, three, four, that would have to be shifted if it's possible.
Okay.
I'd like clarification on that.
Yeah, that'd just be helpful to, to exhaust that, um, and, and figure out what those setbacks are specifically are.
Okay.
And Brian, did we have anything in the staff report, um, kind of addressing the specific public comment about, um, administrative access for emergencies? Like whether that's used very often or whether that's valuable for the city to have?
Um, no, the only sort of comment was the fire chief stating that, that, yeah, no concerns with the application as presented, uh, but had not been contacted despite what the case material said it. Um, but that is something that I could get clarification from, uh, Chief Beaver and EMS service as well.
Okay, that'd be great.
We'll continue this, uh, till March third.
You need a motion again?
Yeah.
Uh, I move to table this application until our March third meeting.
On paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, motion passes. We'll continue this, uh, till March third. And then we'll move on to adjournment meeting. On paper?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.